It being 6:30, let's convene this meeting. I would like to mention that typically, this is a one-year review of our five-year plan. And this year is the end of the previous five-year plan. And the new plan, which we will be ratifying tonight, it's a little bit larger job than is usual. There have been a lot of people who have been involved in putting together this new plan. And we would just like to let you know that there's -- you will be seeing a lot of them coming up and talking tonight. The first thing that we need to do is to convene each one of the councils and the commission. So let me start by calling the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District. And I see that Todd Citron is here, and Bruce Ford, and myself, Leslie McRoberts. And there are two members who are absent. Now, I see Ian coming in now, Ian Miller. And Laura Wyde will not be here. So we do have a quorum.
Okay, I'd like to convene the Bellingham City Council. Council members present are Vargas, Knutson-Hammle, Lilikwitz, Bornham, and Murphy. Weiss is excused.
I'll call to order the Wachem County Council. And all council members are present, with the exception of Mr. Brown. And who else are we missing? Mr. Brown, Rod Brown. And Sat Paul Sidoo.
Oops, turn it back on. Let's start out with just a couple of brief comments first from Mayor Kelly Linville. Would you like to speak to us?
First of all, welcome, everybody, to the City Hall. We got to spend a nice, long night here -- no, actually, a short night here on Monday. I think the main thing that I'd like to say about this plan is thank you. I am so pleased that the commissioners and the two councils have agreed to get together and work off one unified document for Lake Wachem. That's always been one of the concerns that I had as a legislator, working on the quality in Lake Wachem. But not as the mayor, because I've seen all the governments work together. I enjoy very much working with Jack and Patrick and your staffs to move forward. I was, I guess, pleased with Robin Matthews' report to show that, hopefully, some of the investments that you've all been making over the years are really making a difference now in our lake. In the point that we are stabilizing where we are, even though we have work to do, and we still have areas where we need to work harder. But I think this five-year plan is committed to the funding, which is important. We're all working off the same song sheet, which is very important. And it gives us a chance to do two things. One is to revise the plan as we move forward, if we don't think that we're getting the progress that we'd like to get. And the second thing is to complete this plan sooner, based on the number of grants that we can get, and in the case of the city, being able to pay off bonds and have up to $800,000 worth of resources to reinvest into the future. So I think this is a very measured approach. I think it's doable. And I just want to thank all of you for your hard work and for -- basically, for working together. I think it's terrific.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce Wachem County Executive Jack Lous.
Well, thank you so much. It's good to be here this evening. It's good to see members of the three boards and councils here, and the members from the public who are interested in what's a very important issue to us, and that's the health of the Lake Wachem watershed, because it does provide drinking water for so many of us in Wachem County. The City of Bellingham and Wachem County and the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District have made a strong commitment to delivering a variety of programs in our collaborative work to improve the quality of the water in the lake. I'm most excited about the progress that we've made in progress implementation over the last few years. Recently, we've completed projects that include the city's extension of the right-of-way improvements along the North Shore Drive. And we're wrapping up the county's second phase of the storm water treatment system and channel stabilization project at Coronado and Fremont Roads in Geneva. Projects we currently have underway this year are a joint-city-county project to treat stormwater runoff from the hillside above the lake near Academy Road. And we're also rolling out an expanded program to retrofit high-density residential areas in the city and the county. Additionally, we have several funded projects in 2015 and our 2016 capital budgets. One of the city projects is the infiltration and treatment facilities on East Oregon and East North Streets. The city is also providing water-quality treatment for the Britton Road. The county is working on rain gardens, filter vaults, and swales at Cedar Hills Euclid portion of Geneva. And the city and the county are partnering on a project for channel restoration and stream improvements for the Anderson Creek, Beaver Creek, and the Silver Beach Creek. The city's retrofitting the Park Place facility to improve performance, and the county is working on drainage system upgrades in Sudden Valley. Beyond the developed areas that we are mandated to address, and the capital projects that are currently underway or about to start, 63% of the watershed is already protected from future development via public ownership and the commercial forestry zones, and cannot be developed. The reconveyance alone makes up 26% of the watershed land area. A phosphorus-neutral plan for its future is just getting underway, led by the County Parks Director. Currently, the city and the county are conducting market research to learn how to most effectively engage residential property owners in productive dialogue about stormwater and phosphorus reduction. The joint work is aimed at identifying the best combination of messaging, incentives, and technical support to get the biggest residential phosphorus reductions in a way that is best received by the residents. Constituents will be receiving their first invitations to participate in coming weeks. The take-home message is that none of this is successful without the participating staff and community members there who are maintaining the highest level of teamwork and productivity. We really do need to support them and jump onboard the bandwagon and do what we can also. The plan before the councils and the commissions today, when held against the backdrop of committed, ongoing capital work, is the preview of the success that we'll have in looking at the Lake Wachem watershed. It's a process that has visionary collaboration, financial cooperation, and a lot of plain hard work. So thank you for the staff and community members that have put together this plan. Thank you to the councils and the commission for their support in moving this forward. And I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you so that we can continue to improve the health of Lake Wachem. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now, I'd like to introduce Patrick Searnson, who's the General Manager for the Lake Wachem Water and Sewer District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and the boards -- board and the councils. We appreciate the -- I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I've been here for five years, and it's just amazing, in those five years, to see this program blossom. It really is amazing. You know, as an entity, as the Water and Sewer District, we don't regulate growth, zoning, and things such as that. But our interest is very keen and very common and alike with the city and the county. With the city, we both drink from the same water. It is our water reservoir. It is a critical resource for the district. And we are financial partners, along with the city and the county, in regards to different things that we can function in, particularly in the testing and so forth of the water, and ensuring, and doing the things in supportive financially with our various projects. We've invested several million dollars over the last five to six years in regards to updating and fixing our sewer pump stations. And this is critical, because everything that we collect in the district goes all the way to post point. And we want to make sure it arrives safely. And we had issues in the past, we know that. But we have made a significant financial and political investment by the board to fix these things and to continue to improve them. We have good staff, and we think it's critical that we continue to work with you guys, with these folks. And we appreciate the effort on the part of everybody, particularly with the county and city staff. It's been a very good experience, and I'm optimistic for the future. And we're willing to do what we need to do in working with you guys. We may not be as big, but we have a common interest in that lake. It is our resource. We both drink out of it, and we have to clean our wastewater. And it's just a reality that we have to live with. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Moving on to the first topic for the evening is the presentation on the Lake Wachem Management Program. And I believe that Gary Strager from the county will be talking to that.
I think it's down here. And there. Sorry, Mark. I don't know if I'd be able to do it. She'll up here. Up there. Good evening, council members and commissioners. I'm Gary Stoika, Natural Resources Manager for Wachem County Public Works. Thank you for coming tonight. I know the main purpose of this evening's talk is to talk about the next five-year plan. But before we get on to that, I thought it'd be -- we all thought it'd be useful to go back and look at just a few highlights of what we've done in the last five years. The document before you, you'll see there's about 40 pages, and it's full of all kinds of facts and figures. I'm just going to hit on a few top ones that we've accomplished in the last five years. The first one being land preservation. We've -- during the last five years, the county finalized the reconveyance of approximately -- you can read it there, 7,800 acres. Actually, the reconveyance was a little bit bigger than that, but 7,800 acres is within the Lake Wachem watershed. That represents about 72% of the land that's been preserved so far. You can see also on the slide there that that's 10,800 acres of land protected so far since 2002. Most of the rest of that coming through the city's acquisition program. Approximately 78 units and nearly 600 acres were protected in the last five years. As far as the reconveyance project goes, the executive noted that the county, through the Parks Department, is just starting on the process now of determining how that land's going to be used, what kind of nutrient re-control we can put on there, and how best to utilize that land to protect the lake. Another major category here is under stormwater management. The county and the city completed about 11 major projects with a total treatment of about -- we're treating about 1,000 acres, which is approximately about 380 pounds of phosphorus, which gets us to about 13% of the overall goal of treating 3,000 pounds of phosphorus. A couple of the highlighted projects you can see there. 59 projects for the Homeowners Instead of Program were completed. That's the program where we work with individual landowners to get them to make improvements on their property, to decrease the amount of phosphorus coming off there. You can see that contributed about 5 and 1/2 pounds of phosphorus removal. 120 HIP projects completed since the beginning of the program. One of the big projects that was completed also by the city is the Bloedel Donovan retrofit out there near the lakeshore. They installed a treatment trench and reconfigured the -- converted the shoreline to treat phosphorus coming off of the land. Another city project there was the Lake Wachem Right-of-Way Improvements. Those are primarily small-scale swales and drainage improvements along North Shore Drive. Again, that came up with about -- treated about 36 acres tributary area there, and resulted in 30 pounds of phosphorus removal. One project that the county recently completed, there's a couple of posters out there as well, is Phase Two of the two-phase Coronado-Fremont project. That included bioinfiltration swales, storm canisters, and quite a bit of bank stabilization. The bank was incising quite a bit there and producing a lot of sediment. And you can see the numbers there for what that project produced. 33 pounds of phosphorus removal and 170 acres treated. Another big program that's discussed in the report there is our Aquatic Invasive Species Program. I think we're in our fourth year -- fourth year, is that right? Third year? Fourth year? The project started off primarily on Lake Wachem with the intention of protecting Lake Wachem as the drinking water source. Over the past few years -- or in 2014, we inspected nearly 8,000 watercraft. And you can see there that that resulted in about 270 of those watercraft requiring further action and further inspection. And you may have read in the paper about last year was the first time that we actually intercepted one boat with quagga mussels, which is one of the species that we're really worried about. If you look out here on the display case, you'll see that pipe there with all the encrusting quagga and zebra mussels. In that case, the quagga mussels were -- that quagga mussels were dead, but it does highlight the importance of the program. So nearly 13,000 watercraft have been inspected since the program started in 2012. Last year, the county, working with the city, expanded the program to include Lake Samish. We started regular inspections on Lake Samish, and also kind of reached out more to the south end of Lake Wachem with inspections starting in the South Bay area. You can see there, our project has ramped up to 14 inspectors, who have -- were just starting to get that processed for the inspection starting this weekend. So we've got pretty robust -- the Lake Wachem, especially at the Bloedel Donovan site, you know, pretty much runs from about now through sometime in September, October, every day. So we're -- it's a pretty robust program, and certainly leading the state in this area. We've done a lot of community outreach. And as some of you who are on the policy group may have noticed, when we get to the part of -- when we get to the five-year program in a few minutes, outreach and education is embedded in all of our programs. So it's almost hard to tease it out exactly what part is outreach and education, and what part is embedded in the program. You can see there, some of the outreach and education we've done is a new management program website, a new AIS website, including a new online course, and updated content for a couple of our partners. And then we have lots of various outreach events, Water Weeks. You can see them there, Sustainable Landscaping. And we've hosted a whole bunch of other projects, a whole bunch of other events related to specific projects, including the HIP and the residential retrofit. I will note that, you know, some of the other programs that we've talked about, that I just mentioned, the HIP program, we -- I forget the numbers here. I have the numbers here somewhere. But we had something like 8,000, I think maybe somebody could remember. Eli, remember approximately 8,000 residents were visited? Is that right? Where is Eli?
Approximately 1,000. Excuse me, I'm off by -- approximately 1,000. 400 site visits, about three times that many return follow-up visits.
So, you know, in addition to that being part of the HIP program and being part of the treatment, that is a wonderful outreach and education opportunity that we're making contact with those people. And also, I mentioned in the AIS that we, you know, inspected 7,800 vessels. That is also another example of an outreach opportunity where staff at the boats can talk about the importance of Lake Wachem and all the programs. But in addition to that, Sudden Valley and the city conducted some surveys to look at behavioral changes that may -- might be -- people might be amenable to, and what sorts of barriers there are for people making those kinds of changes. There's continuing outreach with respect to animal waste. And, you know, I mentioned that there's lots of facts and figures in there. If you look through the report, you'll see there. But one of the ones that popped out in there was that, over the last five years, there has been 480,000, so that's nearly a half million poops scooped in the Lake Wachem watershed. So I just thought that was a very interesting factoid, half a million poops scooped. The other big outreach and education thing is the Homeowner Instead of Program, that Eli is the main person on that for the city. That program is going to be expanding and moving forward, but there's a whole bunch of site visits, workshops, and that is virtually -- it's probably, what, 80% of your job is outreach, and 20% is probably engineering. And I think that that's all I had to say. Like I said, there's a lot of facts and figures in there. To get down to the details, you can find out all kinds of details about what we've done in the last five years. But with that, I just wanted to highlight those items and move on to what we're going to plan to do for the next five years.
Thank you, Gary. Move on now to the Lake Wachem Management Program, 2015 to 2019, the work plan. And presenting that will be Claire Fogle-Song from the city.
I'm going to introduce you. That would be -- that's -- you've been introduced to this before, and I realize that, and some of you have heard a presentation on this several times. What I'm going to focus on tonight is presenting the Lake Wachem Management Program work plan for the audience, as well as reminders for you all before you are asked to vote on the Just to reiterate some of the process we've gone through, a 30-day public comment period happened from mid-February to mid-March, and this was overlapped a Lake Wachem Policy Group meeting on February 25th, where a public comment was also taken. And we received comment from the council members that were at that meeting also. We took this comment, and there were also comments from -- that were submitted by mail and by email and by phone. Many of the suggestions received during this review period have been incorporated into the plan structure, and have also been added as action items in the plan. And I'll point these out as we go through the plan itself. First, I'd like to start acknowledging the staff and the members of your governments that have worked on this plan. This is a list of the people that have contributed to the plan in some way. Several of the inter-districtional coordinating team, the main organizing body, several of them are in the audience tonight, and I appreciate them being here to answer questions later on, should that need arise. Can't say too much about the cooperation that this plan represents, because it represents cooperation on the administration level, on the staff level, and on the legislative level, on the councils and the commission getting together for meetings like this and hearing staff present these items. I'd also like to say that the public's involved as much as -- or to a great extent in several aspects of this plan. And that includes members of the watershed advisory board. Some people act as property stewards for our land preservation program. We have people assisting with our education programs. We have a lot of great support from the public on our AIS, our Aquatic Invasive Species Program. People have been participating in meetings the county has been holding to design the uses for the reconveyance plan, or property, excuse me. And they're also participating in homeowner stormwater projects. And these are just to name a few. And the list is pretty impressive, the public support for our Lake Wachem initiatives. So the table of contents here shows the program areas that we're going to briefly describe to you. And there are 10 program areas, land preservation through administration, and then the rest of the plan is made up of some tables, and we'll go through those also. The introduction is a brief history, a brief explanation of some of the changes from previous plans, and a statement of commitment from the mayor, executive, and the general manager. That's in the blue box on the side there. The lake facts, these are taken from some previously published documents on Lake Wachem. And following up on a suggestion from one of the county council members, we checked these facts, and we're there in compliance, at least with the previous document. We haven't fact-checked them any further than that. These are the 1992 goals that started this whole thing. And I'd like to just read the second one to you, because you may not be able to read it there. "To protect, preserve, and enhance water quality and manage water quantity to ensure long-term sustainable supplies for a variety of uses, with priority placed on domestic water supply." The rest of them are similar in scope, and they have been leading this effort ever since This page of phosphorus facts, this is the issue that is the cause of much of our work. And this issue will be further defined and funded and implemented through the TMDL process. And John's going to talk a bit about that TMDL process at the end of this presentation. This is a accomplishments timeline. It's basically a synopsis of some of the work that's in the accomplishments report. The objectives, much of the information of the plan is presented in two formats. This is a representative of one of the formats, and that is that we brought parts of the program areas into these tables, just so you can see how they work together. So these objectives are -- you'll also see them in each of the program area, leading the program area page. And the objectives, the cost estimates, actions, and references are all initially separated into the relevant program areas. And then they're presented a second time in tables like this to create better perspective and other perspective, and to create a more accessible document, so that you can go to the tables to get a summary, I guess, of each of those items. This is what one of the program area pages looks like, and rather than stay here, I will go on to that page. This is typical of all the program areas. You have the objective in the top, and that's -- those objectives are, like I said, gathered together in that table you just saw. On the right-hand side box, you have a cost estimate for that program area alone. And then you have the actions listed. And the actions are under categories. So property acquisition has one action, conservation easements has a couple, and so on. And you'll find that throughout the whole plan. And I'm not going to go through all of the actions or all of the elements of the plan. Stormwater, very important. Stormwater, a lot of these tasks and actions will be lifted and put into the TMDL response, the Water Quality Improvement Plan, when we get that formulated later this year or early next year. Land use has been changed, and you'll see some references to that in the introduction. We've added forestry to this, to go along with the developed property part, because they're both land disturbance activities. Monitoring and data. In response to several comments that we've received, language has been added to the plan in several areas regarding the ongoing concern for reducing fecal coliform counts and sources. And this is a good example. We have, in this data collection or monitoring and data program area, inserted fecal coliform references, because the TMDL, if nothing else, is also a fecal coliform TMDL. It's a phosphorus and fecal coliform TMDL. Monitoring and data is also where we collect the data to improve the model that we'll be using when we're tracking phosphorus reductions for the TMDL process. Hazardous materials has been slimmed down a bit, and the only activity of note here is that we're going to be conducting another hazardous waste collection event at locations in the watershed sometime during the course of this five-year period. This recreation has been -- it's been noted in our comments that we received, and it's apparent here, that it has not competing goals, but it has two different, very different goals. And one-- goals, and one is that it's, one of the legacies from the 1992 goals and objectives is that recreation opportunities will be looking to provide recreational opportunities in the watershed. Also, there's a goal to reduce the impacts from existing activities in the watershed. I think this does a good job of bringing those two goals together and balancing them. There are references to providing new recreational opportunities, as well as references to making sure that stormwater regulations are followed when any new recreational facility goes in. Aquatic invasive species, quite a large program, well-staffed, well-managed, and like Gary said, we're just beginning the 2015 season, next weekend actually, this coming weekend, at Lodelle and at Lake Samish. We have a stellar group of new inspectors and some returning inspectors for that program. And by the way, we get kudos on that program pretty regularly, which is very satisfying for us, so. Through our comments, we received a lot of comments on the phosphorus input from the diversion system, and I've pointed out in our response to comments, which will be put up on the website when we're finished with this meeting, that in action 8.1 in this section, we have a action to evaluate the city's water supply infrastructure, diversion water quality, and lake management for opportunities to reduce impacts to lake water quality, and that specifically, that's directly aimed at assessing the inputs from the lake, the phosphorus content of those inputs, and what we can do to manage the diversion differently to reduce those phosphorus contents, contributions. This program area was probably the most confusing in our original draft, and I hope that we've been able to de-confuse that a bit. What we kept in here originally were those education tasks that were general in nature, they didn't apply to any one program area, and what we did then was, we took the program, the education activities that were program area-specific, and put them in their program areas. It wasn't clear to everybody how that worked, and what all was included in education activities, and so what we did is, we have the same type of structure for this first page, but then we brought all of the activity, all the education activities from all of the program areas, put them under the program area that they're going to be implemented under, and we just have pages of these. So this is another, this is another case where we have represented the same information in two different places in the plan, to try to create some clarity and accessibility for people that are reading the plan. And just to make sure that this is clear also, the total cost of the, of all the education programs, we're estimating that to be about three and a half, $3.4 million. The $60,000 here, that's listed here, is only for those activities that are general in nature, and they're very few, and those are the ones that are found on page one here of this section. And I'm ready to answer more questions on that. Administration, simply what we do to get meetings together and schedule staff team, and then in 10.2 of this section, there's a, we've added an action item, because another set of the comments that we received were that performance measures weren't clear, there were too many, we received a wide variety, we also received a comment that there were too few, but we received a lot of comments on the performance measures, and also some additional comments on how they're reported out, and how they're assessed by the public over the course of the year. So we've stuck this action item in here, it'll be one of our priorities for the administration side of the equation here, to revisit the performance measures, to come up with options for how we report out on those performance measures, and try to get a more real-time performance, reporting out of those. So over the course of the year, we can follow the major performance measures that people are interested in, such as phosphorus reduction amounts, phosphorus monitoring inputs, or monitoring conclusions, and things like that. So this is the action timeline table, all of the actions, similar to the objection, objection, to objectives. We've brought all the actions together in one place, several pages of one place, but, so they're just lifted out of the program areas and reiterated here, so that if people are just interested in looking at actions and how they work together, they can go to that table. We did the same thing with the cost estimates, the column here on the right-hand side is simply the numbers that are in the boxes in each program area. We've broken those out by staff, capital, and other costs, which are consultant costs, supplies, and things like that. And again, there's a footnote down here that says that "Cost estimates for program area-specific education and engagement activities are included in the totals of each program area. The total estimated cost of all education activities for the 2015-19 work plan is $3.4 million." We added this table, which is, upon request, a listing of all the funding sources. We're going to try to improve on this and break those down further as we get into the plan, but for now, this lists by jurisdiction the major funding source for any one program This is a table of the stormwater projects, this consists of the capital projects that are designated to be implemented in the term of this work plan. The two footnotes provide some clarifying information, and they are, the projects are based on city and county six-year plan, so the councils have already seen, I think, both six-year, the six-year plan for the city and the county stormwater projects, and these are the ones that'll be implemented in the term of this work plan. And the proposed expenditures for 2017 and, through 2017 and '19, don't have budget approval yet, that'll come to the councils when the projects are ready. The last, the last information here is, all the resources from the program areas are also combined into a table, and when this, when you access this on the web, these are live links, as long as nobody changes their web address from what it was a week ago. And that wraps up this. We'll have comments on the TMDL from John, and this is a time to answer questions from you all on the work plan, and for the chair to initiate the vote on the resolutions.
Thank you, Claire. The public, as Claire mentioned, has had several opportunities to make comments, and some of them have been incorporated already into the, a new plan, along with the 30-day comment period, so this is the time for the elected officials from the city and the county and the water districts to make comments, to ask questions. Carl.
Claire, I've got a question, I'm on pages 42 and, I'm not sure what the other page is, the budget pages, and I'm a little confused, because the big synopsis page on page 42 says we're spending $45 million over the work plan period, and then the next page says we're spending nine, and I was trying to make those two numbers jive.
The next page, oh, the stormwater?
No, this is the two big budget pages, it's page 42 on our...
Okay.
This one says the Lake Wacum work plan totals, right at the bottom in blue, that the total is $45.7 million.
Got that.
And then on the next page, it says the total is nine and a quarter.
I don't know that that page followed into the, was that in the county council packet initially?
No, it's the stormwater.
Oh, it's the storm, it is the stormwater, it's this page?
Stormwater capital projects, and the whole, and I'm trying to compare that in my mind, because we've always talked about this being a $100 million fix, but if we're spending $45 million in the next five years, does that mean we're going to be halfway there?
Probably not. I think, I think the calculations for fixing phosphorus are better calculated or derived from this page here, which is the, what we will spend in the stormwater, in the major portion of our phosphorus reduction tasks in the next five years. The total, $45.7 million, includes a lot of, well, the acquisition program and AIS by themselves aren't necessarily, they're not phosphorus reduction. The land preservation is a phosphorus prevention, pollutant prevention program, and the AIS program has nothing to do with phosphorus reduction, so those would have to be subtracted from a total, and it's like that for quite a few of the other program areas, too. So $9 million is a start on what it'll take in the next five years to work on phosphorus reduction actions, and whether or not that adds up to a million, $100 million over the course of the next 50 years, that still remains to be seen. That was a, an estimation at one time on what it might take to completely retrofit the watershed for phosphorus reduction. Is that making sense to you?
Well, it's starting to make a little more sense, but even on this page, just under stormwater, it says we're spending $14 million, which is five million more than on the other page.
Right, so, so the page you're referring to that has stormwater capital projects, that's stormwater capital projects, the stormwater cost estimate for the program area includes other than capital projects. For instance, it includes all the education that goes into the stormwater program area, it includes the HIP program also.
Okay, so when we've been talking $100 million, that's just phosphorus removal stuff, not education and land purchase and everything else?
No, I think the 100 mil, I don't know, the 100 million is probably going to be all of those things wrapped up together. I mean, if, even if you took the 9 million, or, and it's actually nine and a half on this page, if you look at the capital cost on the, on the cost estimate page. If you, if you took those, and, because it has education in it, and it has the HIP, it has a retrofit program in it, and you expand, extended that out for the course of the 50 years, that plus other things we're doing in data collection and administration, it might get close to 100 billion. Hopefully not, hopefully we'll be able to get this done cheaper.
I'll let somebody else go, I'm still confused by the $45 million on this page over five years, and what is and isn't included, so we can talk offline about that.
Well, let me just try one more time. The $45 million is the comprehensive plan that deals with all the issues, in addition to the phosphorus reduction issues. The TMDL goal, where we're trying to get it done with $100 million in 50 years, that doesn't include a lot of these program areas.
So the 100 million is the TMDL goal?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're doing $5 million more per, in this five-year period under stormwater than we're required for the TMDL?
That's a good point to make, and I think John's going to speak to that, too.
Okay, Commissioner Sitchin, I think you had your hand up next.
Did I push the button, or can you hear me? I'm on, ooh. So I plan to approve this, and I appreciate all of staff's work on this, as always, and I have actually a written statement because, and I apologize for that, but I just, I get nervous when I'm talking in front of a bunch of people, and I want to make sure I said everything I want to say, everything I want to say. And I apologize if I have some of the facts wrong here, and just to clarify, these are my words, not the, I'm not representing the commission here, although a lot of these issues we have talked about, in particular this last year, in considering our options as being a stormwater utility, kind of as a backup to whatever else might happen or not happen in terms of mitigation in the watershed. So this is mostly directed at county council. I appreciate all the energy and time and money that the county council has put into the issue of water quality in the Lake Wacum watershed. It makes some sense for expediency and simplicity to fund these efforts with existing revenues, the flood control tax, for example. However, I feel that doing so falls short for two important reasons. We will need more money than is projected, and the timeline for meeting TMDL is too short. I have stated elsewhere and continue to feel that setting a 40-year timeline to meet TMDL phosphorus loading limits is too long. The Department of Ecology demand is 50 years, however, we have known about this issue for 25 years or longer, so we should not somehow feel good that we are setting a lower-than-required goal, as we are still pushing this problem that we created onto the next generation. I fear that the huge percentage of phosphorus mitigation that will need to happen on private property will cost a lot more than is projected, and furthermore, schedules always slip, and things always cost more than is estimated. And two, we need to more fairly distribute the cost to those who have the most impact. It remains both confusing and frustrating to me that those people who have the most adverse impacts on the water quality in the lake pay the same or less than those who do not live in the watershed. As I understand current funding, residents of the watershed outside of the city currently have no special surcharge for stormwater projects. Bellingham residents pay a stormwater fee of about 10 to 20 bucks per month, plus a land acquisition fee of about 12 bucks per month. I think that shows an incredible commitment on the part of city residents to make change happen in the watershed. I think the same opportunity should be given to watershed residents to show our commitment for water quality improvement, and to take responsibility for our impacts. In 2010, a study called "National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase II Stormwater Program Funding Study for Wacum County" was done for Wacum County Public Works by CH2M Hill. In the study, they recommend creating a stormwater utility as the most efficient and fair way to fund stormwater projects. This is a quote, "Billing for the stormwater utility should be based on the percent of impervious surface on a property, as this is directly related to the amount of runoff created on the property. The amount of runoff is directly related to the need for stormwater services." So I'm encouraging the county council, as you go forward, both in your general budget and how you fund these Lake Wacum Management Program stormwater projects, to make this funding connection between those of us who live in and have the most impact on the watershed, and those who pay for the mitigation of that impact. I think that creating a stormwater utility, or looking closely at it, or at least some kind of funding mechanism can address both the shortfalls that I mentioned, the timeline, either being able to stick to it more accurately, or shortening it, and the issue of fairness, who actually should be paying for the cost of mitigation. So I appreciate the time, and appreciate further discussions on this issue. Thanks much.
Thank you. Councilor Brenner?
Yeah, well, that sort of is a great segue into my first question, is when are we going to get the accurate numbers, or ballpark, or anything about, and you know what, you don't even have to answer these right now, I want to throw them all out there, so you have them, because it's important. We need to know that the county, what, how much phosphorus is coming in from the diversion. I mean, we deserve to know it, and I guess I thought by now we'd have at least a ballpark on that. Also, I'm going to skip some of these, too, and I've tagged every page, so I'll be, oh, yeah, on page, it's like page six, under aquatic invasive species, we talk about minimizing impacts and preventing new invasive species, but what about, and I don't know if it's possible, but what about eliminating what's there, not just minimizing, but eliminating? Seems like, you know, I haven't heard why it can't be done. Skip that, and go to my next one, which is, yeah, the thing about forestry practices and everything, whatever happened to our Lake Wacum management plan, which was supposed to include, especially on private property, forest management, too? I don't know what happened to that, that was pretty darn good, and I don't hear it mentioned ever anymore. Okay.
You mean the landscape plan, right?
What?
You mean the DNR landscape?
Oh, didn't I say that? Yeah, the Lake Wacum Landscape Plan, I thought that's what I said. Oh, maybe I said management, sorry. Yeah, there's a couple things I won't say, because they're not nice.
Are they giving the state DNR management?
I don't think the private ones do. I think they get them through the county, and I, we had the Lake Wacum Landscape Plan that was supposed to really make a difference, and I haven't heard a word about it in a number of years now. The elimination again. Yeah, I'd like to have more information on the AIS, huge, oh, yeah. I'm hoping that the page on utilities and transportation, when we're talking about improving our routes, our trips, and stuff like that, it's very important, the more chip seal you put down, the more it causes problems on people's cars that cause leakage. cause leakage. And if we want to stop that leakage, I think only in cases of where there's extremely sharp curves and steep slopes, we shouldn't be using chip seal at all, because that does cause that to happen. All right, I only got a few more. I'm almost there. Let's see, oh, that was chip seal again. Yeah, it talks about on page 33, about developing low-impact standards. I'm feeling naive here, because I thought everybody's developed incredible low-impact development standards already. Why are we going to develop them again instead of using what we've got and actually start using them instead of just developing them? And then, what is this on page 34? It talks about, under the work plan, talks about conducting a third-party review to assess lake load models. I'm interested in us doing that, but I'd like to know more about who the third party, how we pick a third party to do the review. I think it's extremely important. And it talks under hazardous materials on page 35, says conduct a hazardous materials collection event. I think we should be doing lots of those, and they should be, including, at the same event, people can drop off their hazardous stuff, and they, but to do that, they have to sit through the program to figure out what's going on, so they get educated. At the same time, they're dropping off hazardous materials, which would reduce the amount of trips in the watershed and be good for everybody. So I think, once we've got them somewhere, it's a good opportunity to do education. Thank you.
Do you want answers?
Sure.
To some of them?
Any of them. All of them, I don't care.
Starting at the bottom, the hazardous materials event, we're going to do another one. They cost about $26,000 to do, because we have to have qualified people there to take the hazardous material and to transport it. We'll do another one here in the next couple of years and see what we get. If we get a whole bunch more than we got the first time, we'll look at doing another one and determine this five years. There's only so much hazardous materials in garages and people's garden sheds, so we're just trying to make sure that we're spending our money in a way that we'll get a good return on. The peer review for the model will be done by the experts in that, with that model. And there are three or four in the Northwest that we'll be contacting. There aren't that many more in the whole nation that are qualified to actually take a look at that model and decide whether it's, it'll meet the requirements. Well, when picked at low-impact development, I can speak to this a little bit. There's a new requirement that everybody have low-impact development regulations, and I think what'll happen is our stormwater folks will go through and make sure that they're in compliance with the NPDS permit Phase II, and make sure that the low-impact development regulations we have are, we're going to develop, meet those requirements.
When you say "we," who do you mean? You mean the county, the city, and the water district?
Yeah, the groups led by Bill and Kirk. Chip seal, the county, I'm sure the county staff heard that and can respond to that. The landscape plan, the Lake Watcom Landscape Plan has sunsetted, and it only applied to DNR property. And now that the county owns a substantial chunk of that DNR property, it has less value than it did at the time. We are going to try to carry forward the, some of the constraints of that plan, and when we talk to private property owners and see if we can't get conservation easements on their property that would require them to log in accordance with that landscape plan or better, if we can, so.
I might be mistaken, but I thought the Lake Watcom Landscape Plan covered more than just DNR property.
No, it was just state property.
Okay.
Yeah. The private property is covered by what's called timber fish and wildlife. It's also an enhanced set of forest practice regulations. Oh, yeah. I took a very cryptic note here, and I wasn't sure what it meant. There are some species in the lake that we have been tracking, some invasive species. I just, it's really hard to, and this is why we're, it's really hard to eliminate species once they get in a water body.
But is it impossible?
No, I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it's very costly. And we've been tracking efforts throughout the nation to do that very thing, and they haven't, there've been a couple that have been successful. They've been small pond-type lakes, and they just roteno the whole thing. They just kill everything in the lake, and then they can control what comes back. And I think those are the only examples of where they've had really 100% success. There are other areas that we've been tracking that haven't had good success, and they've spent a lot of money. And you, and the phosphorus amount from the diversion will be forthcoming in the next while.
I heard what you said earlier. I just thought, has anybody from the city or anywhere been even look, it sounds like this is like going to happen next, but it never, there was no research on that at all?
No, it's, we have monitored phosphorus coming out of the diversion.
Oh.
We have some preliminary figures on that, on the flow in the middle fork, the lake protocols. We're doing a complete analysis of water supply system. So when we get it all together, we'll be presenting that information.
Got any idea approximately when?
Sometime this year.
Okay.
Other comments? Councilor Lilikwist?
Thank you, Leslie. I'm really glad that Todd went first, while I regret that he wrote out his comments ahead of time, because they're better than mine, but they say much of sort of what I want to say. Several times, we've heard the 50-year number assumed. 50-year numbers, the number comes in the TMDL. Yeah, the city council's passed a resolution, and I think there's a lot of sentiment to do it faster than 50 years. Yet 50 years is still our planning default number. The staff has, earlier in the year, at the policy group, presented estimated costs to complete the restoration in shorter time periods, 25 years, 35 years, 50 years. And the current funding is almost enough to do the 50-year plan. $1.8 million is close, but not quite, and maybe we can raise that number up going forward over the next 50 years. But we're defaulting to the 50-year plan, and I see no reason why we should do so. And as I say, the city council's already passed a resolution, which says, we do not feel bound by the minimum timeframe set by the Ecology's TMDL, that for good reasons, we should try to go faster if possible. We also have near-term projects that have been identified, stormwater projects that actually restore the lake. They're identified, and they're waiting in line for funding. So it's not like if we had more money, we wouldn't know what to do with it. There are near-term projects lined up. I think we can go faster if we have the resources. So in my mind, the questions are, can we and should we find more money to improve water quality faster? Well, can we is a kind of a specific technical question, and recently, the city council of Bellingham moved to ask for our staff to really bring forward information on what funding possibilities left. That's city funding possibilities, it's county stormwater utilities, it's flood zone monies. What are all the possibilities? How realistic is it that we can reach out to the public and find other ways of funding cleanup? That's the can we question. And I think the other question is the should we question. Personally, I think we should. Everyone talks about how we'd like to go faster, maybe we can do more. I'm tired of talking about how long it's taking and how we might be able to do more. I'd like to be able to answer once and for all, if we tried, could we go faster? But we never quite approach that question. We leave it in the abstract. We default to planning based upon the amount of money we currently have, so we're making the problem fit our budget, not our budget fit the problem. I'd like to see if we can make our budget fit the problem. Maybe we can't. Maybe it's too expensive. Maybe we can accelerate it a little bit, but not all the way. I think we need to answer those questions. I think these policy bodies need to insist that we have those questions before us and before the public, so we can actually make that determination. I'd also like to say that the last five-year plan, in the past, we've been devoting 2/3 of our money, millions and millions of dollars, to land preservation. As Claire mentioned, what that does is prevents the problem from getting worse. It removes no phosphorus. And we've been spending more like 10% or maybe 15% on actually removing phosphorus. The new plan, it's an enormous improvement, and I will vote to support it tonight, but I don't think it's quite good enough. We're still spending way over half on land preservation, and we're still only spending about 30% on the stormwater projects that actually restore the lake. I think we've spent a long time preserving the land, and as the staff report and as the county has done, we've preserved thousands and thousands of acres. I think it's time to start turning away or turning the corner from just preventing harm to actually achieving success. And I think that means reversing the percentages, less money for land preservation, because we're nearing the end, and far more money for stormwater and actually removing the phosphorus, because that's where we need to go. So I will be supporting this plan, but I still think we need to press further. Now, I want to make one final set of comments on money. That's a lot of money. Wow, look at all this money we're spending. It's not a lot of money. You have the city and the county together, we, in the next year, we're going to spend nearly half a billion dollars over the biennium. That's a billion dollars. On the Lake Watcom, we're spending about 1/3 of 1%. Okay? Downtown parking, City of Bellingham spends about two to three times on downtown parking than we're spending here on stormwater projects. It's not that much money. We're spending four times as much money, city alone, on local transportation projects, and three times as much money on affordable housing. Affordable housing is a really important goal. I support that. My point here has to do with proportionality. If Lake Watcom is that important, it doesn't show up in our budget that way. We spend, the city alone, 10 times that much money on one or two bridge projects per year. That's not very large. As a matter of fact, the City of Bellingham's utility customers for water, we're having to foot the bill for a $12 million pretreatment facility. That $12 million pretreatment facility that we're all going to be paying for in higher utility rates over the next few years is 12 times what we're spending on Lake Watcom in a year. So yeah, raising more money is not going to be easy, but I'm looking at the larger picture and saying, is it even as big as it needs to be to show that it has the amount of priority that we think it needs to have? If it's that important, then it should be proportionate to its significance. So I would like to look at more funding, and I would like to bring that number more in line where I think, to the importance of Lake Watcom for our future. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Further questions? Councilor Brenner?
Yeah, Michael made me realize, either as an education, or as a, so.
Way to go, Michael. You accomplished something.
Okay, here I go. Under the funding sources, because he mentioned it, I was realizing I hadn't said anything. Under land preservation, we also see, I think we have other sources, like our Purchase of Development Rights Program, our Transfer of Development Rights Program, and our Parks Fund. Seems like those could and should be used. And then, under recreation, it seems like we could use our Parks Fund. And under education and outreach, parks are, you know, people learn that stuff. A lot of people like to learn about parks, and that's a perfect opportunity, plus a perfect, we have a Parks Fund, so it seems like we should. And I probably missed some of them, but I agree, we need to look at more sources.
Noted. Thanks.
Yes, Roxanne.
Well, I just want to say, I think this is a really exciting time, and I don't want us to lose sight of that. I don't think that there have been many opportunities in the past where the county council, the city council, Southern Valley, and the Water District have all come together and all agreed that we need to do this work together, let alone the mayor and the executive agreeing. I mean, this is all happening at the same time. I am really optimistic about the next five years, and I want to see what the next five years is going to produce in terms of the phosphorus reduction, but also the community outreach, because I think those things in joint partnership are going to do amazing things to help preserve our water quality, but also just increasing the partnership and our continued focus as we continue to move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crayman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to bring to the fore the fact that we have made significant progress. And I don't want to get mired down and diverted into negativism and wrangling over jurisdictions about who should be paying what, and this one should be paying more. That's going to take our eye off the prize, because if you look historically, we've come a long way. I agree with some of the speakers before me that it'd be very nice to accelerate the timeframe to meet the TMDL. That'd be great, and I think we should try to achieve that. But we need to be realistic, and we need to be cohesive and collaborative as we move forward. If you look back 20 years, when we really started to realize that Lake Watcom was in jeopardy and something had to be done, 20 years ago, the county was spending zero, nada, on Lake Watcom. The county's posture two decades ago was that we're not a purveyor of water. It's not our problem. It's the City of Bellingham's problem. Well, we've come a long way monumentally, together. And then, you know, the Water District came on board, and we made a great troika. We, I mean, we have, if you look at what has been presented tonight, and be realistic about it, it's quite impressive. And I think we have a lot to build on, we have a lot to be proud of, but we gotta be collaborative, cooperative with each other, and realistic. But we have to persevere, and we have to be, we can't put this thing on the back burner, and we can't drag our feet, and we have to be energized and assertive about it, but we also have to be realistic about it at the same time. So I'm quite pleased with what we've heard tonight and the program that's been placed before us. I'm going to be supporting it. And I just want to, I want to convey my sentiment that we have a lot going for us right now. There's a lot of energy, and I like, you know, we need to be pushed, and we need to have our feet held to the fire, but we also have to keep our eye on the prize and move forward as expeditiously as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Borman, you have a comment?
Yes. I have to say, I agree with many of the things most people have said. Love to see us accelerate this if we can. We need to look at those kind of things. But I also agree with what you were saying, Pete. Sitting here, you know, I've been sitting here with this for 16 years, and I think I'm more hopeful tonight in terms of how the three bodies are working together than at any point during those 16 years. I think the entities, the county and the city, Water District 10, it feels like are working more collaboratively right now, and we have to continue that process, you know? It, you're right, it's come, God, it's come a awful long ways from when we were first starting working on these issues. We've got a long ways to go on it. We've got to continue finding, you know, different ways to increase funding to get this done, to accelerate it if we can. But I'm going to support this, but I am hopeful on it right now. I really think that the bodies are working closer together. Our staffs are working much closer together than they ever have. I feel better working with the council. You know, let's face it, over the years, there've been times when I didn't want to come to these meetings. I mean, because we knew we weren't going to get anything done, you know? Gene will tell you that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but, you know, I'm hopeful right now that we can make headway. It's going to take a lot of work, a lot more effort, but, you know, we have to continue that collaborative working that's been building. I will support this tonight.
Councilor Ford, or Commissioner Ford?
I'd like to make a statement, one that I've made before, not at this group, but I agree, I'm very impressed with the progress that is made here. But I think that probably continuing to look for all the sources of phosphorus and of coliform, and drilling down and getting at them and doing something about them is probably one of our keys to success. And I would say that my emphasis would be to look at and have performance measurements on some of the necessary, some of the constituents of contamination that are entering the lake is very important, and particularly fecal coliform. Fecal coliform is not only the coliform that we all, you know, don't like to talk about, but in fact, it is very high concentrations of phosphorus accompanying it. So those two together, I believe, need to be emphasized, that it needs to be, continued to be part of the thrust of the corrective measures that need to be made on the watershed potential sources. So a large source of that is the septic tanks, and there are hundreds of them around the lake. lake, and I believe that source needs to be seriously addressed. So I just make that statement again. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other requests for comment, let's move into the voting, and we have here consideration of the joint resolution adopting the plan, and this will be done by each one of the three entities. Would the city like to start?
Sure. Do we need, is there a legal person in the audience? Do we need to read the resolution before we vote on it?
It was included in the packet, wasn't it?
Sounds good.
I have it. I just wanted, I just wondered if we have to, I'll read it real quick. The Joint Resolution of Bellingham City Council, Whatcom County Council, and Lake Whatcom Water and Sewer District Commission, adopting the Lake Whatcom Management Program 2015-19 Work Plan. Whereas in 1992 and again in 1998, the City of Bellingham, Whatcom County, and the precursor to the Lake Whatcom Water and Sewer District jointly formed the Lake Whatcom Management Program and declared their intention to work together to protect and manage the lake. And whereas the three Lake Whatcom Management Program jurisdictions have adopted three previous five-year plans that have provided a framework for a program cooperational implementation of joint activities in which have resulted in improved water quality, environmental conditions for the lake. And whereas the Lake Whatcom Management Program 2015-19 Work Plan defines the major activities and investments needed to improve and protect water quality in the lake and its tributary streams during the next five years, including construction and maintenance of capital facilities, enforcement of standards for new development, retrofitting of existing residential properties, preservation of land, and restoration of its ecological function, and continuation of the Aquatic Invasive Species Prevention Program. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Bellingham. The City Council of the City of Bellingham hereby adopts the Lake Whatcom Management Program 2015-2019 Work Plan as a framework for joint management of the lake and for achieving necessary milestones to improve water quality in the lake. Do I hear a motion?
Let's move.
Second?
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries six-zero.
County?
Chair. We've heard the, we've heard the resolution. Is there a motion from the county council?
Move approval.
Mr. Buchanan has moved approval. Any other discussion? Ms. Brenner?
Just to change.
Mike?
Yeah.
Microphone.
Just to change all the things that say "city" to "Whatcom County."
We're going to pay for the whole thing now, huh?
I don't think so.
All right, so we have the resolution in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Okay, and let's move on to the district now. You had a copy of this in our last meeting. Would anybody like to make a motion substituting the Lake Whatcom Water and Sewer District?
Yeah, I'd like to move what Gene said, but for us.
Just second?
Lake Whatcom Water and Sewer District.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The district has also approved the resolution. Okay, now, let's move on to the update on the next steps in the TMDL. John Hutchins?
Who's he working for tonight?
Working for everybody.
We got it back. Nater, nater, nater.
Working for you.
All right, well, I get to that cleanup this evening, and, you know, it's been a, really a great pleasure to work with all of these wonderful professionals in putting together this program, and I think it's been a couple of five-year plans that I've been through at this point. And I got to say, this, this next five years that we're kicking off tonight is going to show some real improvement. We've seen a lot coming our way thus far. We can measure how much phosphorus reduction we're having in the watershed by virtue of the investments we're making, and we're going to see that, we're going to see that continue. I would like to just take a couple of minutes to zoom back out on the, on the picture a little bit, and I got to zip through this, the next five years, and take a look at what it is we're managing, to think sort of from a satellite's eye view of what this system is that we're contemplating this evening. The total land area in the watershed is about 31,000 acres. It's a big watershed, of which a good portion of it lies outside the developed, the developed landscape. That is, about 12% of that 31,000 acres is protected in some way by the city's acquisition program, or the reconveyance, or by some other mechanism by which we manage, we own in fee or by virtue of conservation easements or the like, the ability to manage those lands for phosphorus and nutrient management goals. The reconveyed land, 27%, also has that benefit, that one of the principal goals of, of management goals of that property will be, of course, nutrient management. 26% of that 31,000 acres is in commercial forestry, remains in commercial forestry, that also has nutrient management goals and nutrient management regulations associated with its land use. That adds up to about 63% or 64% of the watershed that is protected from development and protected in terms of phosphorus management or nutrient management. When you look at the next slice of pie, that is rural forestry, rural forestry can be developed, but only to a one per 20, one unit per 20-acre density, and there are review provisions for rural forestry activities. And certainly, we recognize that there, that's an area that we need to pay some attention to, and the policy group has already set in their agenda for this upcoming summer to take a look at forest practices, at land management, and all of that suite of work in the watershed. Developable land, the remaining, excuse me, 7% that's, that is still developable, it's important to keep in mind that, that both the city and the county have very restrictive in terms of phosphorus retention, stormwater management, very restrictive development requirements in their codes that were passed just in the last few years. So ostensibly, any development that happens on that 7% slice of the 31,000-acre pie happens with de minimis impact to the water quality from a nutrient standpoint. Roads and developed land, that's the remaining 18%, there's a few, there's a few utility easements and the like that are under miscellaneous, but roads and developed lands are really where the focus of the TMDL, the focus of the state and federal mandate to clean up Lake Whatcom originate, where they lie. And if you take a look, a little, take a look at a map of the, or a photograph of the watershed, you get a sense of what that looks like on the ground, with lots of residential areas, residential streets. We're dealing, via public facilities, we're dealing with a lot of our major arterial rights of way, arterial roads, and to the tune, I think Claire mentioned, about 1,000 acres of treated, treated urban development in both the city and the county, and that number by the end of this five-year plan should be somewhere greater than 1,400 acres treated. So that leaves these, these smaller residential areas for which we are developing this rural residential, excuse me, not rural, forgot who I worked for, right? The, yeah, two more days. Residential retrofit program. So when you, when you step back and take a look at the kinds of infrastructure, the kind of work we're doing out there, what that totals today is over 1,200 catch basins between the city and the county that are being cleaned on a regular basis, and that we need to up our game in the maintenance of. 20 infiltration swales, over 30 treatment and flow control vaults, two catchment ponds and 12 miles of mainland, mainline. That's a lot of stormwater, public stormwater infrastructure to build. It's a lot to maintain, and we're adding to it all the time. We have to keep our eye on, on that game. The good news is that at some point, we run out of new public infrastructure to build, and we continue to upgrade that that's existing, and then turn our focus on our residential programs. But somebody mentioned during the comments that we have a good foundation for success, and I think if you just step back and contemplate that 64% of the land area can't be developed, it's managed with explicit nutrient sediment goals, seven, the 7% of the area that remains developable requires full phosphorus retention, the 24% of developed land area, that is of that 15% of the 31,000 acres that has been developed, 24% of that is currently treated. That is, a quarter of the developed land area is already being treated. We've retrofitted 120 private lots, and we have a successful record of collaboration. We should be pretty proud of ourselves. We should recognize how much, of course, how much work we have left to do. Nonetheless, I think we're, we're sitting in a good place. We, of course, in terms of our residential work, we have some learning yet to do. Through the HIP program, we learned that there are some barriers to voluntary participation in, in retrofitting private properties, everything from finances to having the technical know-how, an inherent distrust of government. Some folks don't like what, what we offer, what it looks like. And we have land use and ownership problems, you know, non-resident landowners that don't want to participate. But we are addressing those problems. In fact, now, as, as late as this last couple of weeks, we have been engaging, engaging a company to help us, a marketing company to help us do the market research necessary to understand exactly what those barriers are, and what we do to either incentivize, to make more appealing, to direct at the, at the core sensitivities or sensibilities of the people who, who we need to engage. And we've got, there are three, three tasks associated with this, with this body of work. The first is reaching out to every person who ever was involved with the homeowner incentive pilot program, whether they were successful participants or not, finding out why they engaged and followed through, and for those that didn't, understanding why they didn't participate. The second phase of this market research exercise is to address a broader cross-section of people, asking them questions about how, how their participation can be energized, and then targeting, using that response, targeting, my brain just went dead. Targeting, pardon me? Somebody help me up there.
I'm talking about high-impact groups.
And sitting down with those representatives from those community groups, and, and bringing them into the conversation so that the result, yes, that's right, so that the result of all that work is, is a program that has community buy-in. And I, and that's the take-home message there. And that leads me to my last, my last comment, which is about the Total Maximum Daily Load Report. This is that administrative exercise that we are engaged with the Department of Ecology and the EPA, that which sort of puts a chalk behind our wheel so that we don't roll backwards on, on this effort. There are some decision points and next steps that you need to be aware of. We expect that the Department of Ecology will make its final clarifications to this report in the next month or so. There's still a few clarifications they're working through with the county. That means that at the point there, they have finalized that document, it will be pending EPA approval, and that's expected another few months after delivery to EPA. That puts us in the position of, of beginning the work, or actually, I should say, continuing the work, that we know is, we already know is in that document. And one of the first things we are asked to do is, as the Lake Whatcom Management Program, update the phosphorus loading analysis, and that's something that Claire referred to a little while ago. The good news is that we knew that was coming, and we've been working on it for quite some time, and that means taking, well, since 2003, so about 12 years' worth of new data, integrating it in, into a analytical model, and going through the process of, of validating that model, calibrating it and validating it, and then using it to verify what, the kinds of results that the Department of Ecology got in their early effort. We expect over the course of this summer that those results will come forward. That will, that will inform our water quality improvement plan, which is the next formal exercise, planning exercise that we've got to go through. And at that time, there's a built-in decision point around how we, how we finance all of this work. That is, we need to revisit the financial strategy and make sure that what we talked about in concept over the course of last summer still fits the model that we see, we envision going forward. And at that point, of course, there will be room for lots of discussion about levels of funding and that sort of thing. And of course, all through this process, continuing implementation. So that's what you can expect out of the, out of the TMDL conversation going forward. And I think it's important to recognize that we have our own local interest, local goals, local vision for Lake Whatcom that is independent of the TMDL. And while they, in a lot of ways, they parallel each other, we never want to confuse the administrative process with achieving our goals here locally. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Are there some questions for, for John? Hearing none. Do we have a sign-up list for people who'd like to speak? Because the next item on the agenda is our public comment period. That doesn't mean, if you haven't signed, you can't speak, but we'll start with the people who have signed up. Okay. Haley Hested?
I'm with him.
You're with him? Okay. Wendy? Wendy Harris?
First of all, I'd like to say I'm very disappointed that there wasn't public comment before you voted. I came here thinking that you were going to be considering comments before you took a vote, and I'm assuming other people did as well, so I'm not sure what sense there is, but I did look at this stuff, and I listened to what you said, so I'll speak. I don't think we're doing good, and I am really appalled, frankly, to see people patting themselves on the back. I'm not focused on timelines, I'm not focused on money, I'm looking at results. I'm looking at whether or not the lake's getting better. And you know what? That's the one thing we haven't been talking about tonight, the performance of the lake. How is it functioning? I can't tell. I mean, we've talked about a lot of other stuff, but we haven't talked about what's really most relevant. How's the lake doing? Why aren't we talking about this year's Lake Whatcom Monitoring Report? Because it really emphasized concern with, with algae blooms, and there was a new type of algae discovered in 2014, and at least 100 people called and complained about it because it was impacting water quality and water taste. So, you know, when you see things like that happening, we're not doing good. And yes, we have been doing projects, but all the work that we've been doing, we're just treading water. We're just treading water because we continue to have growth in the watershed. And so how are we going to get to a place where the lake's getting better when we keep adding to the source of the problem? And I have to say that I think we're actually regressing in our efforts to restore the lake. When I first started working on lake issues, it was commonly understood that we needed to address watershed growth, increased impervious surface, loss of forest cover, onsite infiltration, and enforced, and enforcing regulations as important tools for achieving success. We no longer talk about that. We don't talk about enforcement, regulations, or watershed growth. We talk about incentives and engineered stormwater approaches, which just transfers the costs from developers to the public and is not always very effective. And, you know, one of the worst things I saw here tonight that no one's questioned is the assumption, the assumption that the stormwater standards that we have work. Everything we're doing is based on the, why haven't the city and county gone out and gotten information to show how well our stormwater standards work? I lived in the watershed. I don't live there now. There was so much stormwater runoff, I had to move. And I'm not the only one that has that problem. So when I... So when I see more growth going in and more stormwater coming down towards my low-lying house, I'm not a scientist, I don't need to do a study to know, we haven't cured our stormwater problems. So I think it would be very helpful if we worked on actual facts and data instead of assumptions. I would also like to see a chart reflecting the yearly summary, maybe over 20 years, of how much we're treating our drinking water to keep meeting safe drinking water standards, because the treatment itself is a source of cancer. And if our water quality standards are being met through increasing amounts of chlorine, that's not progress, and not disclosing this information could mislead people. I'd also like the staff to explain why we're not adopting a watershed-based approach. Under the Clean Water Act, we have flexibility to determine how we're doing to achieve water quality standards, and a watershed-based restoration is the preferred method of the DOE and EPA. The county and city are proceeding as if we can simply engineer our way to clean water while continuing to grow. And this is contrary to best available science and state and federal recommendations for restoring impaired watersheds. A comprehensive watershed-based approach that recognizes the interrelated connections of all ecosystem functions is the best way to succeed. If we have increasing problems with aquatic invasive species, I don't care what the measurements are on water quality. That is a lake ecosystem in trouble, and that is why we need an integrated ecosystem approach. I would also like the staff to explain why the work plan does not more fully incorporate and follow the recommendations from the Caldwell and Brown Report on a cost-benefit analysis for removing phosphorus from the lake. It determined that preservation of undeveloped land and restoration of degraded land were the highest and best approaches in terms of cost and effectiveness. It also awarded high ratings to enforcement of regulations. It provided a low rating to engineered stormwater approaches and to public education. For the most part, we're doing things contrary to this report. Yes, we have a very commendable property purchase program for the watershed, that's the program I like the best, but it's high in its costs, and it can only take us so far. Why aren't we doing a better job of regulating and enforcing the regulations that exist? Why aren't we using our legal authority to impose new building regulations that have a clear nexus to public health and safety? Even for vested subdivided lots in the watershed, it's reasonable to limit building footprints and impose more stringent tree and vegetation retention standards to discourage McMansions. Why are we permitting private docks and recommending approval of watershed shoreline variances? The number of variances that we are giving has gone up. How about some data on that? Because I think that it would be very illuminating. And finally, we are making it too easy to develop in an area where buildings should be discouraged, and everyone's overlooking that fact. And I really think that we need to remove the Lake Watcom reconveyance bike plan from the work plan. That was done without an environmental review or assessment of species and habitat, save for eagles and merlets. It's adding trails closer to the lake and big loop trails that create barriers for wildlife movement without an assessment of geological hazards. I don't know if that's going to add to erosion and landslides, it's not a water improvement project. I'm just going to sum it up right now to say that I hold the city and the county accountable for the lack of this progress. I've been on a steep learning curve over the last eight years, but you're professionals, and you should know better. The work planned before you reflects politics rather than best available science or best management practices. It is intended for profit, not people. We desperately need a game changer, and all you've given us is status quo of ongoing degradation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. The next person on the list is Sally Harper. Marian, go ahead and chill, be down a minute, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Marian Bedill-Bellingham. I'm going to bring up a different tack from those that I usually talk about when I fuss about Lake Watcom protection. Mr. Crimmon, I know where your house is, about at the end of the road, as far as you can drive down the North Shore. I also know that coming in from the South Shore, from Highway 9 on Park Road, you take a little zig there, and you go up a little stretch of road that I believe is called Blue Mountain, or something like that. And that road goes up through eight or 10 houses and quits. So you've got this dead space between these two dead ends of roads. I intensely, diligently, and vigorously demand that the county and everybody else involved put in a permanent restriction, a blockage, a prohibition, and impossibility of ever connecting those two road tips together. Can you imagine the impact that would be done along the roads and to the Lake Watcom water if there was an enormous amount of traffic, people making this zing, 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 zing circular around the Lake Watcom so they could look at the pretty water and leave their automotive trash along the roads and running into the lake? So my question is, will you block the closing of that road, excuse me, block the opening of that road, a prohibition on closing that loop forever and ever? That's one angle. Another somewhat different comment, although still related to road. I read and I hear about the work that's being done in terms of dealing with the properties and the runoff in the properties and the HIP program, which I think is pretty good. I've participated as an advisor citizen, I don't have property that I can do, but that's a pretty good one. I ask the question, and forgive me if the numbers are in the reports that are out here, I didn't see them, how many of the properties actually on the shoreline, how many lake-front properties have participated in this runoff protection program and cohesion? I mean, that's, how difficult is it for the phosphorus on a shoreline property to move from that lawn into the water? Poof, it's done. Therefore, I grant those as a very high priority for effort and work and motivation to protect the lake from the runoff of shoreline properties that are just directly into the lake body itself. And with only slight shift, apply the same thing to the creeks and the gullies that run from down, from the neighborhoods. The properties on the creek bank do the same thing, their contribution into the creek, just poof, 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 it's in the lake. So I want to see those efforts substantially increased, and forgive me if it's already in the report, but if it's not, put it in and do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bedill. Sally Harper?
Hi, well, this is an opportunity to speak to everyone who cares about the lake, so I appreciate that. Personally, I feel sort of worn out by this point I'm trying to make, because it seems like I'd really rather move it onto your agenda and get it off my plate, because it's just, I think it really needs to be addressed, and it's not being addressed. So some of it matches what Wendy's saying about more enforcement, I think is necessary. I know you're all setting these agendas for the next five years, but I don't see much about enforcement. And, for example, money for enforcement, people to do the enforcement work, and plans to, of what you're going to enforce. I'm representing a neighborhood of about 10 to 12 households. We're out on North Shore Road, almost to the park. We've been complaining and writing letters and submitting zoning violation reports for over a year. We recently sent another letter to the county council, which was signed by about 12 of us. So I'm here by myself tonight because everyone else has given up, basically. So I guess I'm the most tenacious one. But, for example, last year, when I was here at this meeting, there was some verbiage in the plan about enforcing violations, and I think most of that had to do with new development. For example, if there's exposed dirt or land disturbance during the wintertime, that's illegal in the watershed. But our concern is that there's really not much interest or concern about enforcement regarding existing dwellings, existing dwellings that are violating zoning and basically increasing all the, your concerns, all the watershed concerns that you're speaking of, pollution, phosphorus, extra trips into the watershed, density, high impact. For example, when we built our home in the watershed, we had to apply for all these permits. For example, the well permit, it was only, we were only allowed to have single-family use. Our septic permits, it's only allowed for single-family use. People who pull water from the lake, it's only allowed for single-family use. But what happens is after people get these permits, it seems that they can do whatever they want, is what we see. They can turn their homes into duplexes because they want to make money on this beautiful lake, this public reservoir. They want people to come and have celebrations there and parties. They get to build extra units, so illegal accessory dwelling units on their properties. They basically get to charge hotel tax. Over a year ago, we made code violation reports to the county about these illegal accessory dwelling units, and what we've been told is that it has a very low priority. But I'm thinking, well, who else cares? You know, if these, right now, it seems low impact, but it won't continue to be low impact as more and more of these are owned by Canadians, and they're renting them out for large groups, and they're violating the septic permit, the water permit, the well permit, the, they don't care really about not using fertilizer or launching illegal uninspected boats. They don't care. The advertisements say, bring your boat, launch your boat. They're not going over to get the boats inspected. So it has to do with, on one hand, the county thinks this is a low priority, in my eyes, they're saying, we can't enforce, it's not important enough. But on the other hand, you know, you guys don't have it on your agenda either. So I'm not sure where, why it keeps falling through the cracks in terms of how to get some enforcement somewhere happening, and I don't know why it's sort of omitted in your plan here. I think it's really important. We've gone to the watershed advisory committee, I've talked to Claire personally, we've gone to the Lake Watcom Policy Management Group. So it is a public reservoir, and there is some recreational use, but to not limit the use and to not enforce, I think, even if you can enforce these illegal ADUs everywhere in the county, you know, maybe you could make a priority for the watershed. To me, the watershed should be special and should get a little bit more follow-up with some of this, things that are really bad for the lake. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. With no further comment, that comes from Brenner?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Okay.
I just wanted to respond that we, it is on our agenda, it is going to be coming up in committee, and we have more enforcement people now. We can't force the administration to make it a higher priority, but we, my recollection was we've made it a higher priority. Thank you.
Okay. With no further ado, then, would the city like to adjourn their meeting?
I declare the special meeting of the Bellingham City Council closed.
Was anybody else interested in speaking?
No.
Oh, I don't see anybody else waiting. Kelly?
We're adjourned.
Okay, I would like to thank the staff, especially for the collaborative effort they've put together in getting this together. And I also declare that the commissioners are adjourned. Thank you.